Good evening. Welcome to tonight's forum for the Winona City Council Race, Ward Number Four. My name is Bree Mackey and I will be your moderator for this event. Our co-sponsors are AAUW and the Women's Resource Center of Winona. We are pleased to welcome those of you in our live audience and also the citizens who may be watching at home. We would like to thank the City of Winona for allowing us to hold the educational forum in the council chambers. For those of you who are watching at home, we have a call-in phone number where you can provide questions for the panel. That number is (457) 8280. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization organized at a local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While as a league, we do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties, candidates, or tell the voters how to answer the referendum questions. This forum is intended to provide the voters with information so they can make educated decisions and choices on the ballot. The views expressed in this educational forum are those from the candidates. We do encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you to get involved in your community. During the forum, we ask the audience that is present and our TV listeners to write their questions down or call them in. The League of Women Voters and co-sponsors will sort the questions for the moderator. The moderator will ask the questions. Our timekeeper this evening is Marcia Ward. We would like to remind everyone to please turn off your cellphones or pagers. Pictures and videotaping is not authorized by the League of Women Voters. Copies of the forum rules, ground rules, have been provided to the audience, and they have also been provided to the candidates well in advance of the forum. I am going to highlight a few of them. The League of Women Voter will distribute the questions to be asked in attempts, and attempt in good faith to make sure we cover all areas of interest expressed by the audience. The candidates do not know the questions in advance. Questions that are hostile, partisan, embarrassing, inappropriate, or of personal nature will not be asked. Questions on similar topics will be grouped together. The audience is expected to be courteous to the candidates and good listeners. This is a live cable TV broadcast. The audience is asked not to express support or concern during the forum and to hold the applause till the end. Again, citizens watching at home may call (457) 8280 with their questions. All written questions will become the property of League of Women Voters. A display of educational materials is outside of the forum site for your information. Candidates will strictly observe the time limits on responses. Timekeeper will hold up the cards to indicate the time is about to expire. Once the stop card is displayed, candidates please end at that sentence. Opening statements will be two minutes. Questions will be allowed a one-minute answer and a closing statement of one minute. The forum will be taped but may not be edited and must be broadcast in its entirety and in accordance with all FCC regulations. The candidates may not use the educational forum video in campaign ads or literature. Tonight, our candidates with us are George Borkowski and Ken Jackson. Absent tonight is candidate Matthew Hazelton, and he has prepared a statement which I will read during the opening statements. And I have asked both of them that are here if I could address them by their first name, and so I will do so. We'd like to begin our opening statements now, and we will start with George, please. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's political forum. I'm George Borzakowski, and I currently am the Fourth Ward Council Representative. My attire is a little different tonight. The bow tie is in honor of one of our greatest mayors on the wall, John Latch, and next week we'll be celebrating John Latch Week. I'm a longtime employee of Peerless Chain Company, forty years. I also am an adjunct instructor for the Minnesota Southeast Technical College. I've been doing that for twenty years. I'm married, I have two children, four grandchildren, and that very smiling face behind the reference desk at the library is my wife Carol, for those that go up there. I'd just like to begin that, you know, I have had the honor to serve as Fourth Ward Council Representative for sixteen years, and during that time, I have worked really hard to build good working relationships with residents and businesses in the Fourth Ward. I currently serve on the following committees: the Port Authority, the Port Authority Revolving Loan Fund, the Joint Airport Zoning Board, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, of which I was chairman for three years, and in the past, I have served on the Agaming Park Committee and the CJCC Committee. My main objective is to listen to the residents of the Fourth Ward and bring their voice to the council table. One of the most important Fourth Ward concerns is the switching of trains on Mankato Avenue. We are working with city administration to find a good working solution. I will be working with the Neighborhood Watch Group to replace the Sobieski Park Building, and I plan to work on finding another entrance to the East End via Louisa Street or another avenue, and I plan to continue to work to update the infrastructure in the Fourth Ward and throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Ken, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming. I appreciate that. I know a lot of you had to rush through dinner or skip it all together. That's nice. Also, thank you, George. He didn't have to show up. He's in the thing pretty good. I did, so I appreciate George showing up and giving the League of Women Voters an opportunity to learn about some new people. My name is Ken Jackson. I'm married to Mary. We run a small shop called SSI Gift on the East End at 760 East 11th Street. We fix clothes, we fix shoes, we sell retail, we sell jewelry, scarves, that sort of thing. We've been at this since 1985, and that is about all I have to open with, other than thank you, and I hope I can answer some of your questions accurately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. And now I'm going to read a letter that was provided by Matt Hazelton. "Hello, my name is Matt Hazelton. I was born in Winona in 1979 to Donald and Tamara Hazelton, both of Winona. I am a member of the American Legion Son of a Vet and the Eagles. I am a journeyman lineman with XL Energy. I work keeping our utilities up and running 24/7, rain or shine. I graduated from Winona Senior High in 1998 and earned a degree in business from Minnesota State College Southeast Tech. I am also a proud husband to Carmen and a father to a beautiful eight-year-old daughter, Madison. I am running for Fourth Ward City Council to ensure the city will continue to thrive for our future generations. There are several issues I would like to address if elected to serve our beautiful community. I am a strong believer and advocate for economic development. I feel it is paramount important to maintain steady job creation and sustainable growth in Winona. Responsible and effective government is essential to growth, which I can provide through leadership and an open-door policy. I will welcome input and advice from all. We need to keep our city running efficiently and cost-effectively while making sure our community priorities are being met. We must strive to keep taxes and utility costs low to allow our workforce and small businesses more disposable income. Some of our roads and intersections are in poor condition and should be addressed in a cost-effective manner. My experience managing teams and multiple working personnel and a multimillion-dollar project will ensure these goals are achieved. I will address the Mankato Railroad crossing wait time and the roughness of several crossings. I will work with multiple railroads involved in order to solve these issues for the community. Lake Winona is a beautiful amenity to the community and is being used more this year for boating and fishing purposes due to the high level, water levels on the river. I will work to focus on maintenance of both lakes, including small lake weed problems. I will work with the county and state when it is necessary to achieve goals, as I have many power line projects. I would take pride in being the voice of Fourth Ward and would promise to serve the City of Winona with integrity, honesty, hard work, and compassion. I am grateful for any support you can provide. Thank you for your time, Matt Hazelton." And now we're ready to start with our first questions, and the first question will go to Ken. "What are your top three priorities or goals for city government?" And just a reminder, you have one minute to answer, and if you need questions repeated, please feel free to ask.
Okay. Top three parks, for sure, especially the Rose Garden. I really miss that one. When our kids went to prom, they took pictures at the Rose Garden, and last winter just brutalized. Even my roses were destroyed. I would like to see that up and productive and gorgeous the way it used to be. Parks also floats over into the ballpark issue with WSU. So WSU is also on my agenda. And thirdly, I would have to say that it's the rental housing industry. It's a good thing. I was talking to Judy Bodway last week, and she claims that basically we have two paychecks every year, and that is property tax. So I don't want to lose too much more of that to outside influences. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you. As I mentioned in my opening statement, the switching of trains on Mankato Avenue would be a priority to get those, get the switch plate removed off of there. Also, another entrance, as we've been talking about for past years, into the East End Industrial Park via Louisa Street or another avenue to get truck traffic and traffic in general off of Mankato Avenue, as that street is really, really, really getting a big traffic impact. And also to work on infrastructure, our water mains, our sewer mains, curb, gutter streets, not only in the Fourth Ward but throughout the city. We need to put a lot of money involved in all those streets and a lot of things with it, and we just need to address those problems.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Question number two, George, you'll start. "What leadership skills do you possess that will help you to represent the citizens of Winona?"
The leadership skills that I have is, first of all, is my longevity at my place of business and also in my part-time job as an adjunct instructor. I have served on the city council for sixteen years, working with the council here. I currently serve as city council president, which you fill in for the mayor when the mayor is not here. I've have to done that once with our current mayor and three or four times with the other mayor. And I also, through the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, I served as its chairman, and those are tough leadership roles there as you deal with situations from there. But I think my experience from being in elective office and my committee appointments and my work longevity prepares me well.
Thank you. Ken?
Okay, thank you. What leadership skills will help? Was that the question?
Yes. "What leadership skills do you possess that will help you to represent the citizens of Winona?"
Okay, good. The first and the most obvious would have to be thirty-five-plus years running a small business, and that's no small feat, especially in Winona. Money's tight around here. It takes some, it takes some very good money management to keep a small business afloat. Thirty years as a parent, boy, I learned a bunch there. But I think most importantly, it's my need to include you in my decision-making process. Leadership doesn't have to fall completely on me, but if I represent the majority of people, that makes me a better leader, and I would count on you people to step up and tell us what you need and how we can go about getting it for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken, and we'll start with you on the next question. "The city continues to support the 30% rule even though it has been challenged by numerous citizens at council meetings and in the courts at taxpayer expense. The result of the ordinance has pushed a problem from the core of the city to a citywide issue. Do you support the 30% rule or would you work to change or repeal it?"
Whoa, come right out of the box with that one. Okay. I'm not a fan of the 30% rule. I'm not even sure it's legal. My feeling on this is that, first off, it helps the big, big businesses like WSU, Kevin Brady, those people who are trying to lock out all the small people. Two points on that one. When WSU gets involved in that, we lose them tax dollars. As I'd said earlier, Judy Bodway has two paydays every year. That's $42 million. We can't lose that income consistently, year after year, and 30% rule will help us stay in the game, us locals, instead of big outside money people. So, no, I'm not a big fan of the 30% rule.
Thank you. George?
The 30% rule, when it first came to council, I supported it, and it went through with no problems for about, probably five, six years. Then there was a challenge to it. It went through the county court system. The city was found not in violation. We then went through an appeal process, I believe, and the city was found not in violation, and now it is up at the Minnesota Court, Supreme Court system, and I am advised, that's all I can say on the matter, as it still is in litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. George, we'll start with you on this question, and it is kind of a twofold question, so if you need this repeated, please let me know. "What is the right way to mine and handle silica sand mining and processing? What requirements would you place on operations of silica sand mining operators?"
As far as the mining operations go, we have none in our city. We have had a mine that has, there's one mine, and it has not operated in two years. We have set regulations on the mining operations and the transfer of the sand and the loading of the sand and the washing of the sand. The taxpayer has put up money for a silica sand monitor, which the results so far have come back stating nothing in serious, serious problem with it. But like I say, we already have regulations in place. They said go to the state. Well, the state, they were looking at us to get regulations. We were the first community to put regulations in place.
Thank you. Ken?
Okay. Frack sand, aggregate. When I answer this question, people get mad at me because they don't like my answer. My answer is, who cares what I think? This isn't my town. This is your town. If, if the majority of you people want to put a frac sand mine in the middle of Wyndham Park, I'll vote yes for it. I won't agree with it, but if the majority of the people actually want frac sand in their town, speak up, and there are people lined up ready to drill right now, so, yeah. But mostly what I'm seeing, and I could be wrong, most of the information I'm taking in right now is no frac. Nobody seems to like it. They don't like washing it, they don't like mining it, and you can't cover over it. You can call it aggregate or whatever you want, but it's not fooling anyone. Nobody in this town wants it, and if that's the way it is, then I'll vote no for it. Again, it's your choice, not mine.
Thank you, Ken, and back to you with the next question. "City parks are one of the attractions for tourists as well as the enjoyment of the residents. The gardens at Levy Park and Lake Winona are in serious decline of plants, weeding, and beauty in the last three to four years. The only solution seems to be to ask for volunteers. What other creative ways can this be improved, and why not use taxpayer money to fix them?"
At me?
Yes.
You're gonna have to say it again. I only got about half of that.
I know. It's a long one. Yes, I will repeat it one more time.
Thank you.
"City parks are one of the attractions for tourists as well as an enjoyment for residents. The gardens at Levy Park and Lake Winona are in serious decline of plants, weeds, and the beauty for the past three to four years. The only solution is to ask for volunteers. What other creative ways do you see to be able to improve them, and why not use taxpayer dollars to do so?"
Okay, yeah, the parks are huge and beautiful. Even today, talking to Chris right over there, it was one of the things that he likes about our little town, and there's room for improvement in that, there's no doubt. They are beautiful parks. Our forefathers were brilliant enough to take a lot of land, set it aside, and dedicate it to recreation. I can't even count how many times I took my kids to the parks and we went down the slides. That's all well and good, but we can't, the volunteer thing is croaking. I've actually had people come to me and say, "Don't ask for any more volunteers." That's fine, if they don't want to volunteer, but then they need to put up the money. This has to be funded. It isn't going to happen by itself, so if you want beautiful parks, you have two choices: you volunteer or you pay up. Those are the two choices, and I think pick one or both. These are really important topics. It brings people in, it keeps them here, and it makes better families, you know? Get up on Sunday morning, take your kids after church, and, okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's fine, I'm rambling.
Just a reminder, you are able to finish your sentence. Just don't start a new one. All right, George, please answer the question.
We're looking for people to tend to the flower gardens, correct?
That's, that's...
Pretty much in a crux is what we're talking about. You know, through the budget process, we have done reductions, and the gardening of the flowers at the lake and at Levy Park all falls on the park maintenance budget, and I know there have been some reductions there. What I would do is certainly look at, if this is a very important issue with people, look at the park maintenance budget, see what we have for personnel. We may have to add another person perhaps to do that. Would those, you know, just tending to those two gardens, would that be enough work for the individual? I don't know, but it would, it would have to be looked at with the park maintenance department and make a decision there.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with George. "What is your view of ongoing and building partnerships with Winona State University, especially in the area of recreation space?"
Collaborating with Winona State University is certainly a good thing. There's a lot of things that are available to the city. There's a lot of things that are available through Winona State for businesses to use. It's definitely a high-class institution, just as St. Mary's University is and Vocational School. I presume they're probably talking about the baseball field. All I know is that the city is involved in negotiations with Winona State. None of those have come back to council yet. They do have a dynamite plan for the lake. It's a good plan, but I'm going to refer to a phrase that Ken used. I'm going to let the people tell me what they want to do. Where do we want to go with this?
Thank you. Ken?
I need more than two minutes. We have, we have to partner with these people. They're a behemoth. They're huge. The money they bring into this town is staggering. They make like five times more money than we do. The tricky part is, they're smart. They're way smart, and they're really well-funded. So when we sit down at the table with WSU, we have to be very careful what we say and do with them. My feeling is that when they, when they took the first park, they said one thing and did another, and only did they, really? Okay. They went back on that only when they wanted to get another ballpark, and now they're all our best friends again. I think they can be our best friend, but we really have to sharpen our pencils and keep an eye on them so that it's fair. It's fair to the community, and it's fair to this, this giant industry that we have right smack in the middle of our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. We'll start with you on this question again, Ken. "Will you support ambient air quality monitoring at the fence lines of silica sand processing operations and paid for by the operators?"
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. George?
Same. Thank you.
Thanks. That was quick. I wasn't ready for the next question. George, we'll start with you on this one. "Will you work to help the City of Winona balance the budget? Excuse me. How will you work to help the City of Winona balance its budget?"
First of all, we have a balanced budget. They have to bring a balanced budget to the council. A way to balance it, first of all, is that we have to continue to keep our fight up for local government aid. Local government aid is $9 million a year that comes to the city. We have a $39 million budget. That is around 22%, and that's also, the local government aid funds half of our general fund. What I continue to do is, as I have done through the past budget debates that we've had in meetings, is that you look at the expenditures, you look at what we can do, what we can't do, what services they need, what services they don't need, what's essential, what's not essential, because what the city does is we manufacture a service. That's the product that we sell. But just continue to look at budget line items and continue to see where, where we can cut if need be.
Thank you, George. Ken?
That's a good answer. I think the first thing we have to keep in mind is that the city council is not omnipotent. We don't, we can't just wave a wand and make stuff happen. In order to get things done, we need to, we need to build relationships with the people who control the checkbook, and when we can convince them that we need something, when the people speak up and say, "We want this done," then we go to the checkbook and convince them. We need to be prepared to tell some people no. There are a lot of people out there with a, with a long list of, "You ought to do this, and you better do that, and why haven't you..." You know, we're not omnipotent. We can't just wave a wand and make it happen. We have to make hard choices. We have to choose what stuff is goofy and what stuff is not. This, this week alone, I've heard three goofy things. I didn't have the heart to tell them that they're, they're just plain silly. No one's going to do a curb cut so he can't have a slab there. You know what I'm talking about. So that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. The next question, we'll start with you, Ken. "What are, what one thing would you do to improve the downtown area?"
Only one thing on downtown? Okay.
Pick one.
Just one. All right. I would, I would take, instead of the money that we have right now, we kind of drizzle it all over everything, I would try to get some support that we take all that money and focus it on one building and renovate it to the level of the Choate Building or the Exchange Building, and then put some of our good retailers in there, expand their hours a little bit, create the hub that everybody reminisces about. "Oh, I remember downtown when it used to be this and it used to be that," and we've spent a gajillion dollars trying to recreate that, that fantasy. I think it can actually be done, but instead of sprinkling the money everywhere so everybody gets a taste, we take one building and we, we make it the crown jewel. And I don't know what Kupietz is doing with that building, but that'd be a dandy. That's a nice, big building, riverfront property. I mean, parking, just saying, that'd be a nice one. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Ken. George?
Did you ask for buildings or for activities downtown?
I'll repeat the question. "What one thing would you do to improve the downtown area?"
Well, for activities, I would contact Jim Remlinger. We'd have a car show down there about maybe once every three weeks. That really brings people down there. The City of Winona has money in a community development fund that if you buy a building downtown, you can come and see them if you qualify. There are loans available for renovation of buildings. As Ken just talked about, the Kupietz Building, that is currently going to be renovated. There's people that have purchased that, and they will be working on that one. But there is things available for, for business owners that want to purchase a building, you know, there, there is some help, and then there may be a historical project as well too. There could be funds available, but there are some avenues that they can take to get assistance.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with George. "How can Winona entice more manufacturing and businesses to come to Winona?"
Well, let me tell you, we have a lot of them, but we never have enough of them. There's things that we can do to bring businesses to Winona. First of all, we need to sell them that we have the best transportation business. We have river, we have rail, we're fifteen minutes away from a major interstate. We have truck terminals throughout, we have an airport facility. But most of all, the City of Winona has a very highly educated and skilled workforce. They can really, really draw from that pool well. If they want, if they want, they say, "Years ago, you went out, you bought property, built it, and now you bring your plans for assistance." plans for assistance." We have the Port Authority revolving loan fund. We have tax-exempt bonds. We have conduit funding and other programs available if businesses qualify to locate or renovate here in Winona.
Thank you. Ken?
That's a good question. I'm going to start with the Port Authority. This is an excellent resource, and they put, George was part of it, and he put together this whole SciTech thing, and that's a $15 million, was it 15 million dollar project? That's a big deal. It was also hire people. But when I'm talking to the people about this topic around town, I get three things for feedback. They need quality employees, they need quality infrastructure, and they need quality amenities. And when I question them on what they mean by that, we have good jobs in this town, but they don't, these people don't live here. Even Fastenal has a high percentage of lacrosse on Alaska Rochester employees. We need these people to stay in town, raise their children here. I hope, and I could be fantasizing, but I hope that we could partner with Education Village with WSU and crank out something besides teachers. They've got three square blocks where all they're going to generate is teachers. I like teachers, too, but Fastenal and SciTech, they need different kinds of employees. Hopefully, we can make them.
Thank you. Right now, I just want to give a friendly reminder that if people at home viewing have questions, to please call in 457-8280. The next question, we'll go back to Ken. How do you intend to communicate with your constituents to make sure you are accurately portraying their opinion to the council?
Okay, thank you. I've already started it. When people found out that I was running for Fourth Ward, suddenly my store became community central. Literally without exaggeration, I spent three or four hours a day talking to different people about everything in this town that bugs them, from potholes to mosquitoes and frac sand and teachers. And so my door will remain open to the people, and I really want to encourage them. You know, don't be mean. Don't come in and holler at me like Brad did, but stop in, be nice, and make your point, and bring people with you, because if it's just one guy whining, I really don't care. But if it's a lot of people and they have a good point, I'll bring it to this table, and I will talk to the other members, and we'll see if we can get it done. Keep the doors open, bring the walls down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. George?
One of my main objectives has always been and will continue to be is to listen to the residents of the Fourth Ward and throughout the city. Many residents, when they phone me, I phone them back. They may email me. A lot of times, I will not email you and answer back. I will call you back, or I will visit you at your home, or you will visit me at my home. I see people out in the public. I have a very good rapport. People know I do contact them. Sometimes I have town meetings, though started out strong, then less and less people came. But I say mainly is just by, you know, seeing them, responding to their questions. And yes, I have had some people holler at me, and sometimes it wasn't very nice. And then, you know, the next day, after everybody sobers out, then, "Oh, geez, did I talk to you yesterday?" So anyway, that's how I would do it, is, you know, and I do it now, I'll continue that, to bring their voice to this table and contact them any which way I can.
Thank you, and we'll start with you on the next question, George. If you don't support the 30 percent rule, how would you protect the character of our neighborhoods?
All I can say right now is that I am not allowed to speak on it just for things that I have been involved with. I cannot make any more comments on it until the litigation ends.
Thank you. Ken?
If you don't support?
Yes.
If you don't support this 30 percent rule, how will you what?
How will you protect the character of our neighborhoods?
Oh, that's, you can't do that. You can't mandate character. Character comes from inside, not outside. If your neighborhood is important to you and character is important to you, then you put your money where your mouth is, and you buy the property in question. But you're going to see that with the 30 percent rule, and frankly, I don't even know why we're talking about it. I think it's kind of a moot point unless you want to defund it. The 30 percent rule will take care of itself. The students don't want to live 40 miles from school. They want to live in a little cosmos downtown by food and drink. So 30 percent will take care of itself. Let free enterprise do its thing. It'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. We'll start with you, Ken, on the next question, please. The city of Winona has a higher poverty rate than the federal level. Why do you think this is so?
Is that me?
Yes.
I thought it was George's turn.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
You know, first off, I don't know that that's true. I kind of think that's BS. Just because somebody says it doesn't make it true. But let's, for the sake of conversation, say it is. Poverty is a number. If you look at the federal numbers, I'm brutally impoverished. But I'm not miserable. I got decent clothes. I got food on my plate. I got a decent home. But if you look at the big numbers, yeah, I'm impoverished. I'm pathetic. I could probably go on welfare. But I'm not miserable. I think if you compare my numbers to people in New York who make a half a million dollars a year, I look pretty sad. But I'm happy, and I think most of Winona is happy. I don't think poverty is, I don't think that's a good strategy. I don't like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. George?
Did you ask that again?
Sure. The city of Winona has a higher poverty rate than the federal level. Why do you think this is so?
I guess all I can say on that question is, I do not know if our poverty level is higher than the federal rate. I'd have to have actual documentation to prove that we are, and then I would make comments on it from there. But I know we do have a lot of, you know, subsidized housing programs that people can get on, and maybe it's, you know, other people that maybe lived far away. They moved here and they were bringing other people up. I don't know. But as far as the poverty rate, I have no idea if we are or not.
Okay, thank you, George. We'll start with you on the next question. What will you hope to accomplish in the next four years?
In the next four years, I would like to see our city continue to be in the strong financial condition that it's in right now. We have a debt per capita of $129, which is just simply unheard of for the way of life we have here. I would like to see the Mankato Avenue switch plate removed. I'd like to see an entrance to the East End Industrial Park, and I would like to see a strong program to rebuild our streets, our curbs, our gutters, our sewer, and our water. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
Cool stuff. If I had to get one thing done in the next four years, I can't beat this thing into your head often enough. I want to get the people, the citizens, the voters, I want them empowered. I want them educated, and I want them involved in government. I sometimes feel like the citizens are like absentee landlords. They hire someone, or they put someone in as a tenant, they disappear for four years, and then they come back all whining. "Why is the place all beat up?" You know, I think you can't run a community healthy that way. The people need to get involved. They have to communicate with me. I have to communicate with other people on the board, and the commissioners, and the staff. The staff is so important around here. I think everybody underestimates that. So accomplish one thing, get you guys involved. Stop being absentee landlords. Get involved, or get out of the way and just let the machine run itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. We'll start with you on the next question, please. What can or will you do to help provide efficiency of service to all Winona residents?
Efficiencies?
Mm-hmm.
What does that mean?
I would gather that they just want to make sure they're getting help effectively and efficiency of their services that Winona provides to them.
Oh, you know, same answer again. Get involved. Don't just throw stuff out there and wait for it to happen. Make it happen. Talk to your council people. Judy Bodway's office is open. Carson's office is open. Walk in. Talk to them. Find out what the rules are. Find out what the needs are, and get it done. They got rules for everything from stinky garbage to slabs. I mean, these pieces are already in place. You guys simply aren't using them. It's like a toolbox full of glorious tools, and nobody knows how to use them. It's a hammer. Pick it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. George?
You're talking the effectiveness of the services, if I heard that right?
It says efficiency of services. Yes.
Well, right now, I think the city of Winona delivers a very good efficiency service level, from police to fire, to streets, to library services, senior citizen services. As I mentioned before, we manufacture services. And when we get into budget reductions, budget cuts, all these departments provide a service for someone. You know, don't cut this, don't cut that, don't this, but they all provide a service, and all those services make our lives a lot better. As Ken talked about the parks, you know, we want beautiful parks. Well, it's part of a service that we need to deliver. But I think we do deliver our services very efficiently, very cost-effectively, and we will continue to work on trying to deliver those services. We cut our budget by over $1 million, 1.2 million. We continue to deliver the service to the people at full strength. Police, fire, library, I believe the library was closed one day, but the services will continue to be delivered.
Thank you, George. And we'll start with you on the next question, please. What can the city council do to build tourism and enhance the growth of the interest in the area around the levee?
Well, the levee, I'm glad you brought that up, whoever phoned that in. The levee, as you know, we have a very good levee park committee that's looking at things to do for our levee. Very creative people on there. I don't know if the cameras can pick this up or not, but here's a picture of Main Street right now going to the levee. Here it is right here. And this was given to me by Paul Johnson, longtime Winonan, very, very creative man, was in construction all of his life. He then provided this, and this was provided to different park committee members, different council members, so on. Here is a nice pavilion coming right up to the levee. Very, very nice picture, very creative, very attractive for tourists. And another person brought to me, what you could also do on that is down at our sewer plant, we had the two engines housed out of the old Wilkie, old, big, beautiful steam engine engines that really powered these old riverboats. Let's somehow try to find a place on the levee to perhaps display those engines.
Thank you, George. Ken?
I think this question ties into the last question a little bit. As a homeowner, property owner, we have to take care of what we have, and I don't think we're doing a good job of that. We can't stop the flooding. When the levee floods, it floods. It's closed, and there's nothing you can do about it. But when it's open, the last time I was down there, there was a garbage can with a rat hole chewed in the top of it. The fence was damaged. The sod was ruined. The bricks were astrew. That's not efficient delivery of services. We are paying these people to do a better job. They really do need to do a better job. And this, again, is the people and the council getting involved and holding people responsible for their actions. You know, you can compare it to lacrosse or red wing all day long, but what we have is pretty enough. If you just clean it up, and, you know, how the weeds and the leaves sat down there for months before they bothered to clean them? Come on. I wouldn't run my house that way.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Ken, we'll start with you on the next question, please. Minnesota has one of the highest alcoholism rates in the nation. What can the city of Winona do to reduce the number of underage drinking in the community?
Me? Well, first off, I didn't know that. Minnesota has the highest alcoholic rate?
One of the highest alcoholism rates in the nation.
Wow, that's too bad. I don't know anything the city council could do, you know? They're not omnipotent. You know, if you're suggesting we close down bars, I suppose you could, but that's just going to make the other ones busier. I don't know. I don't think I have an answer to how to solve alcoholism in Minnesota. I don't. Sorry.
Thank you. George?
I did not know it was the highest rate either. But what we have right now is the city of Winona has what they call the best practices, I believe it's called. It is taught by the police department, our liaison officer at the time, Kevin Kearney, and I don't know who teaches it now, but bars can send their people, their bouncers, their door checkers, their bartenders, to go to this class to learn how it teaches you when a person is intoxicated, how to ID people, when people have had enough to go ahead and cut these people off. Our police are excellent at that. We do have foot patrols in the fall of the year to go to these houses and bust up the parties. I think we're doing the best that we can. You know, we have 10 officers and maybe, you know, 250 minors drinking. It's pretty hard to catch them all. But we do have programs in place where bar employees can go, and they can learn how to recognize these situations.
Thank you, George. And we'll start with George on the next question, please. Winona will have a larger population of senior citizens in the near future. What can the city of Winona do to support these citizens?
That's a very good question. I'm going to look at it from a housing standpoint. We do have a lot of senior assisted living housing facilities in town, very, very, very nice ones. As far as what can we do for them, you know, we have a bus route for those that can't drive. Can we go and perhaps say, "Well, we're going to lower your taxes by 10 or 20 percent"? You know, that we certainly can't do. But our city, we have a senior friendship center for those that wish to attend it. There's a lot of activities there. And I know a lot of people, as today, as we age, I myself, I guess being one of them, we maybe keep ourselves more active. You know, I can't speak for everybody, but we have housing available for these people. We have activities for these people. You know, we have many opportunities and programs out there for them.
Thank you. Ken?
Okay, thanks. That is a good question. It ties into some of the other things that I feel strongly about. We do have a lot of senior citizens, and quite honestly, they're really excellent people. These are people with good character, good morals, and money to spend. In my store, what we have done is we accommodate them. We find out what their needs are, and we make sure that they don't want for them. I open the door for them. I make sure they have parking. I make sure my sidewalks are clean and sanded and salted. When they come in my store, I sit them down. We have a lot of mechanisms in place to care for these people. They come in with, they have drivers, they have nurses, they have licensed people that are really good to them. What they need from the city is when they get out of the cab and step onto the sidewalk downtown in January, that they don't break their leg because of snow piled up and slush and mush. That's a mess. You want these people to be happy, then accommodate them. Make sure that they're getting basic human services, and that's clean them sidewalks, clean them streets.
Thank you.
Even Mary and I...
Sorry.
Did I really know?
Sorry. Ken, I'm going to start with you on this question, please. How will you support transparency in the city budget process?
How would you support what?
Transparency.
Transparency.
In the city budget process.
Wow. Talk to Judy. That's the smartest chick in this whole building. She'll tell you anything, and she knows everything. Again, with the involvement, if you care about this, call her. She's the nicest girl. She'll sit you down and talk to you. She's got a stack of papers aside, talk all about money, and she knows every little thing about it. That's as transparent as it gets. Pick up the phone, walk down there, say hello. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. George?
I agree, not only with Judy, but we have the finest finance director in the state of Minnesota in Mary Berector. She balances the dollars, the cents, everything. Mary's phone line is open, and Mary has told... Mary's phone line is open and Mary has total control of what's all in those budgets and how all those numbers work and all the programs, how the monies go from one deposit account to another. She has set up enterprise funds for our sewer and water department. Outside of contacting Judy, I would contact Mary Berector and she can explain, she'd be willing to explain the whole budget process to us. So I would recommend that as well.
Thank you, George. And we'll start with George on the next question, please. The park and rec program at Lake Park is exceptional with paddling in the summer and skating in the winter. What can we do to improve this program and to continue its outreach to encourage people to appreciate and better publicize it?
It is a good program. I'm glad people are recognizing it. I think we have a big thanks to Winona Canoe on that for their donation of canoes and paddles for the people to use. You know, it's advertised. It's there for people to come out and use. Why they don't come, I don't know. But like I say, it's certainly, you know, that lake is filled with activities, canoeing, fishing. Now, I said with the high water, there were some boats out there as well, too. But like I say, it's there to use. All I can simply say is just go and use it. And thanks again to Winona Canoe for the donation of the canoes for the people to enjoy.
Thank you. Ken?
Well, if I understand the question correctly, my answer would be, in my experience, what I'm learning about the economy and the people right now is that things are becoming event-driven. There's a hum to life that is fairly static most of the time. Then there's the event. If you want to create a bigger buzz with these events, create an event. The triathlon thing is a big deal. We see that in retail. We see that in business. We see that in other communities. If you want to get people involved in that, create an event. And we're working towards that. The community is doing well. They're getting, we've got them bike people up in the mountains. We have the bike people down by the lake. Event-driven. Get events, post them up. People come from far and wide. They're pretty fun. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm being told that we're nearing our forum end. And so at this time, I would like to invite both of you to be able to take a minute and do a closing remark. And since, George, you started with the opening remark, I'm going to have Ken do the closing remark first. Ken, you have a minute.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for listening to me rant and carry on. I hope I answered some of your questions. I don't know. If I didn't, call me at work tomorrow. I'll try again. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. George, you have one minute.
Now, do I get an extra minute or not, sincerely, George?
Load up on them.
In closing, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this forum on tonight. I know it takes a lot of your time and you were able to have the public get a closer look at Ken and myself and of course, the letter from Matt. So just like to simply just end in closing, saying that during my time on the council, 16 years, it has been the most productive, the most challenged, the most controversial, and the most emotional times that this city has ever seen or experienced. We have come across many challenges and there's many, many more to come. And I think together with the people and the councils and the good administration, we can meet those. You have supported me well over my 16 years and I appreciate it very, very much. I am now asking for your support on August 12th in the Fourth Ward City Council election with the hope of continuing to go on and continue to serve you for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, George. And thank you, Ken. That wasn't so bad, was it? We are at the end of our time tonight for this forum and we want to thank both of our candidates for the informational event. The League of Women Voters would also like to thank our cosponsors AAUW and the Women's Resource Center of Winona. We would also like to thank HBC for taping this event, Cable Channel 19, and Charter Cable Channel 987, who will both rerun the tape at later dates on the government access channels. I would like to share additional dates and times of upcoming league forums. On July 23rd, we'll have the primary candidate forums. 6 o'clock will be Winona County Commissioners District 2. And at 7:30 on the 23rd is Winona County Sheriff Candidates. On August 5th at 7:00 PM at the St. Charles Community Center, we will have the Sheriff Race Candidate Forum sponsored by the Women's Resource Center of Winona with the League of Women Voters moderating. This will not be televised. Select candidate forums will be rebroadcasted on Charter and HBCI government access channels. Check your local medium for which forum and time it will be broadcast. All of the League of Women Voter general forums will be held at the Winona City Hall Council Chambers throughout September and October. Watch your local media and publicity for upcoming dates for these opportunities. If you need information about becoming a registered voter, please call the Winona County Auditor's Office or the Winona City Clerk. The mnlwv.org is a website you may also use for general voter service information. Please, a reminder to vote on August 12th. Thank you and have a great evening.